Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. The September 13th, 2022 meeting of the Anne Rundle County Council is now in session. Just as a heads up, a pair of eyeglasses was located on a bench in the lobby area. So if you think you might have stet ears aside, I'm there with the information desk. All right, so we're jumping right into our agenda today. And we do have a pretty good agenda, but I think a lot of straightforward bills. So we will start right on. Let me pull up my agenda. Bill number 78-22. And this is an administration bill, and I see the team coming on down. Good morning. Mr. Baron, you have the floor whenever you're ready.
Sure, I've got Mr. Teroux, Ms. McAllister from Budget, Ms. Bobbitt from Health, and Ms. Kenny from Office of Law. We do these bills a fair amount. There is one, I don't know if I want to say it's a quirk, but an issue with the bill. It does involve a capital project. It will require five votes. 78-22 has two components. It makes supplementary appropriations from unanticipated grant revenues for the Community College Department of Health and Partnership Children, Youth and Families. Additionally, $22,000 transferred in the general fund from the CAO contingency to the Orphans Court to cover increases resulting from the passage of Bill 60-22 after the FY23 budget passed. Second, the bill revises the scope and description of the Woodland Beach Volunteer Fire Rescue Relocation Capital Project. I think we'll be hearing a little bit more about this project on a different resolution. But the bill removes the second sentence of the description, which stated that the county's contribution would assist Woodland Beach Company in acquiring the property as the Fire Department no longer requires the funds for purchasing the property. The remaining description simply states this project will provide a county contribution towards the relocation of the Woodland Beach Volunteer Fire Station. That was a lot. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for my colleagues? All right, thank you. I guess that one's, we're feeling pretty straightforward about that one. Thank you. Moving on to bill number 79-22. And this one, actually, we have our three co-sponsors, Mr. Volkey, Ms. Pickard, and Ms. Feedler. So whichever of you would like to speak first, you may have the floor.
Uh, huh? Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. I was thinking Pruski. Sorry.
I believe this wording in this legislation came from another jurisdiction to assist with nuisance properties in our county, give two departments specifically a little more teeth. I know it's been an issue in the 5th District, and I think probably in every district in the county. So happy to discuss and hear from the departments or answer any questions.
Yeah, and I would just add, I mean, I think we have absent property owners that have left homes vacant and are using some of our abatement programs to maintain them. And this would make that no longer advantageous for them and create a violation for every day that they're in violation. And I know, I know of specifically three properties just here recently in District 2 that I have neighbors, you know, really concerned about, and it is a huge problem. So I'd love to hear from anybody, if there's any problem. This bill has been worked, I think, really well through the, through the, in conjunction with the administration. So I hope everybody's, I hope it's in a good place.
Yeah, we're okay. I have Mark Wietermeyer, Andrew McCara, Erica Mantooth, Al Herb, and Kelly Kenny with me from IMP and Health. As both sponsors stated, this is addressing a problem that's around the county. Taxpayers pick up the bill, and this bill will help us address nuisance properties. And our experts here have been involved in providing feedback to council and council staff on this. Happy to answer any questions. At this time, we have no major issues with the bill. In fact, I think we like it.
I'd like to just ask one question to sort of understand a little bit better. I know I've had a situation in my district where I have an elderly resident who is really just not able to maintain their house themselves, and maybe doesn't have the financial means to, you know, hire, you know, whoever else to provide the maintenance. How would that play out for a person, you know, say, an elderly person of limited means?
This bill is only for vacant properties that are not inhabited.
Well, that clarifies that. Thank you.
Actually, really quickly, I have a question. This is not retroactive, correct? So if there is an active property in any of our districts, the process would have to start anew in order to qualify for any action to be taken by the county, correct? Just for Kelly Kenny, Supervising County Attorney, that's correct, it's not retroactive. But if they did accrue the two or more violations after the bill became effective, then it would, then it would affect their property.
Great, thank you. All right, seeing no additional lights, thank you very much to the panel. And we will move on to bill 80-22. And this is actually the same set of sponsors, Mr. Volkey, Ms. Feedler, and Ms. Pickard. Whoever would like to take the floor, you may have the floor.
I will take the floor.
Sorry, I'm interrupting. I just wanted to make one quick point. Mr. Volkey is on his way. He should be here 10:00, 10:15. I don't know if you wanted to, you can change the order if you feel that it would be helpful to include him in the discussion. I just wanted to throw that option out there.
Thank you. I will leave that to the other co-sponsors of the bill. It's up to you.
I think let's, in fairness to Mr. Volkey, let's come back to 80-22.
Come back to this one? Okay, that's fine with me. All right. In that case, moving on to bill 81-22. And this is Mr. Pruski, who will not be here, and Ms. Pickard. So Ms. Pickard, you may have the floor.
Okay, great, thank you. So 81-22 is just a simple modernization to the code and the use chart in the code, granting car wash facilities via conditional use in C1 and C2. You know, as our code has, you know, a pretty rural legacy, the use chart and things regarding certain kinds of businesses are not always consistent. You know, you can have a drive-through McDonald's on a parcel that you couldn't have a car wash. So we're just, this is really just creating a conditional use for car wash facilities in C1 and C2.
Thank you. Ms. Feedler.
Oh, sorry.
Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Jessica Hare, District 7. I think this is a question probably for the sponsor, just looking at, I think, gas stations are a special exception, and that's, I know you said a drive-through McDonald's, but my mind immediately went to a gas station. And so I'm just curious why the decision conditional versus special exception, and if there was any particular area that you were looking at that prompted the bill.
I'm not exactly sure about particular area. I just know that with the conditions set forth in the bill with the 50-foot area for, you know, off of residential areas or behavioral access from a minor arterial, it's, it is narrowing down the different C1 and C2 parcels. And I guess we could, I would say that a gas station is a little more intensive use than a car wash, so that, that's why car wash, gas stations tend to be special exception. You also have to have, obviously, access to sewer and water. So just trying to make sure we're not overburdening with regulation, but not necessarily giving it, making it permitted.
All right, seeing no additional lights, thank you very much to this panel. We will move on to bill 82- whoops? Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Baron, you may have the floor. My apologies.
Not much to add to the discussion. This is policy choice for the council. We have no objection.
All right. Then seeing no additional comments or questions, we will move on to bill 82-22. Let's see, this is Ms. Feedler's bill.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Amanda Feedler, District 5. I realize I was not saying my name for the record. Give me a moment. Sorry, my internet is running a little slow. So this is a very simple bill. It is taking the notification of community meetings and carrying who receives those notifications for community meetings for developments all the way through the process. Right now, HOAs and community organizations and associations get the preliminary community meeting information, but then they don't get notifications and modifications like the residents in a 300-foot perimeter do, or radius do. So this just, again, keeps it consistent, keeps all the players and stakeholders involved through the process. I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right. Mr. Baron, would you like to respond?
No objection to the bill.
Okay. And seeing no other lights, we will continue moving forward. All right, next up, we have bill number 83-22. This is Ms. Lacy's bill.
Good morning. Thank you, Madam Chair. Bill 83-22 is to make a segment of Furnace Avenue and the northernmost part of Ridge Road in Hanover to be designated as scenic and historic. These areas, if you've ever been up there, on the Ridge Road side, the road adjoins the Patapsco Valley State Park. And Furnace Avenue is a twisty little road that happens to also have a railroad bridge over it. So it's a CSX rail line that runs over a very small underpass that's not able to accommodate, you know, an 18-wheeler, or really, I think even, you know, a moving van probably couldn't get through there like your U-Haul. Pretty small. So especially on Furnace Avenue, there's a lot of dense vegetation, a lot of steep slopes, and it's an area that residents and bicyclists and pedestrians all enjoy it for recreation, just being right there next to the park. There are some projects in our development queue that will be in our, there'll be warehouses, which is a lot of what is planned for the general area there that we, when we went over Plan 2040. And these are going to be as warehouses, they're going to have a lot of heavy, you know, heavy traffic. So the, basically, if you're looking at the map attached to the bill, it's a little corner right up along the Howard County border, because the river is the border there. And we want to direct, at least I think, I'll save, speak for myself, but I think it's good policy to be able to direct any impact dollars as far as traffic mitigation and the infrastructure around that away from this particular area. It also has a history of flooding and the, you know, steep roads. I mean, the residents are really concerned that development will be happening there. It won't likely ever be whatever other development there might be besides these warehouses that are to the south. It's unlikely to ever be, you know, a huge residential development because the area just couldn't, couldn't support it, almost the topography of the area. So I'm bringing this bill because I'm looking for a way to try to protect these two road segments from, from, you know, developers being, you know, having to widen these roads, destroy the scenic and historic nature of the roads to the extent that exists. But there's not a mechanism to do that in our current county code, other than to just bring a direct amendment to the map. We have a section of our code that is, scenic and historic roads, sets up a scenic and historic roads commission. That commission has not met in more than a couple decades, and it had a role in recommending which roads could be or should be designated scenic and historic. The county council didn't do anything with their recommendations until 2006. When they did, they adopted a lot of them, all of them, I'm not sure if it was all. But what they also did was council members offered their own amendments to the map. And at that time, they were offered as amendments to, to the bill that would be originally creating the map. And when they brought their amendments, it's my understanding that folks from either the Office of Planning and Zoning or the Department of Public Works, because they both have responsibility in the bill, you know, went out there, viewed the roads, and they agreed with the council members' request to amend the map. So, so this is sort of a text amendment type of approach to a map because the council has no power to convene the scenic and historic roads commission. And the developments are ongoing now. So that's, that's the bill, and I'll be happy to take any questions. Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Baron, you have the floor.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I do have a pretty large table, so let me introduce everyone. Obviously have Lori Rhodes here, Deputy CAO for land use, Stephen Keisigler, Lynn Miller, Jane Cox is here, as well as Margaret Keisigler, but she's sitting back here because we couldn't fit everybody at the table. And we have Greg Swain as well. The, to thank you, to Councilwoman Lacy, we've had several discussions about this bill. This is an interesting approach. However, it is not one that the administration can get behind at this time. We've had discussions and look forward to continuing the discussion as we run up to the, to the hearing on the 3rd, and maybe we will be able to, to find a way forward. But I do want to flag a few things, and then the experts here can answer any questions the council may have. Completely in agreement with the sponsors' intent to protect the communities along Ridge Road, however, this approach, it's the expert opinion of the folks at the table, won't achieve that goal. There are, when you have a designation of scenic and historic roads, you are exempt from certain adequate road facilities testing. If this bill were to pass as drafted, there are, I believe it was seven developments that are mentioned, five have already gone through their road test, two have not. It's the opinion of planning and zoning that the mitigation could be worked out through more traditional means and protect the, the community. I think we all, all share that goal. I will also flag the, the process, as, as Ms. Lacy mentioned, is, is one that is rarely used. In, in the '97 report, had a commission review, staff was involved with council, yes, council members did tweak roads in consultation with staff. I think this bill is sort of similar, just removed from time in that process where a council member is raising an issue and staff is taking a look at it. We have, folks at OPZ can talk about this more if, if council wishes, we have taken a look at the roads proposed. There are two roads, Ridge Road and Furnace Avenue. Ridge, we do not feel would meet the criteria, enough of the criteria, to warrant a designation as scenic and historic. Furnace Avenue may meet that criteria, but it's, there has not been a thorough study or documentation for it. So while we're a little more comfortable with Furnace, still have concerns. Ridge, on the other hand, as Councilwoman Lacy mentioned, is, is an important road. There's a number of projects, and I keep getting them confused, so I'm going to try and find the map in my pile, but there's north and south. This bill only designates a portion of Ridge. So what we could see, and I think the fear from the administration, is that if a development were to be exempt from some of the traffic mitigation, at the end of the day, it will cause the road to fail, which means that the county would have to pick up the cost to repair or maintain the road. We saw a similar example of this where a, off of a scenic and historic road in Councilman Pruski's district, a large development was, was built. And now in your CIP, there is a large county capital project, whereas had that developer had to engage in traffic mitigation, we'd still assume there would be some county costs, but that cost would be much diminished. So for those reasons, the administration can't support this bill. But I do want to be clear that we do support the intent of the sponsor to protect these communities, and we believe that we would be better served protecting the communities by going sort of the more traditional traffic APF route. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, and if I've said anything incorrect, somebody on the table will whack me.
Madam Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Lacy.
Okay, whoever wants to whack Mr. Baron, please get ready. Because I wanted to ask first, you said that, that the roads may be failing in the future, but it's my understanding that these two road segments are already failing, especially, particularly according to the traffic studies that are being used for the current developments.
Sure. Steve Keisigler, Department of Public Works. To answer that, there are seven development projects that we know of. Five have gone through. Enough of their, what we call TIS, the transportation studies. We know the mitigation. What's happening here is that there are failures on Ridge Road, but these development applications who have to do mitigation are either causing new failures or making the existing failures worse. The other thing I think that's important, we learned yesterday in a late afternoon meeting, working with the developers involved in this and their council, there are more projects coming than we are aware of. And we, we're not sure of the number, but it sounds like it's another three to five, and one of them seems to be a very big residential project. So the development is, Ridge Road has failures. Developers who are having to mitigate are either causing new failures or making the failures worse, hence the mitigation. And we have two developers who have been disinclined to engage in any discussion about what mitigation they would apply. And I would, I would also add, while Mr. Baron's using the term more traditional mitigation, we're getting really creative in trying to find a way to facilitate these developments, but also protect that road in a way that it's usable into the future.
Ms. Pickard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Allison Pickard, District 2. I just, since Mr. Baron mentioned that Furnace Avenue at this segment may, is, is the more likely road to meet the criteria, I wanted to know if Ms. Cox could, this is the first time this council has taken up historic and scenic roads. So obviously, it doesn't come up that often, since we haven't dealt with this since 2006. So can you give me just a snapshot of what that criteria is and, and how Ridge doesn't quite meet the muster, but Furnace might?
Jane Cox, Office of Planning and Zoning. The, the challenge here is that we haven't had a chance to look at it and evaluate it. A very cursory desktop review. We have seven criteria for a rural road to be considered. And of those, there are certainly elements of Ridge Road on the northern part that's bound by the state park that may have some of those, those, you know, features. Furnace Road has more of them, and there is a historic association with Furnace Road. But because we haven't had the opportunity to do a review, the real challenge here is that we can't apply this until we have some time to, to review it. And in, in, you know, the instance of our evaluation criteria, this was before I was involved with the program, so I'm reading the, the criteria, trying to understand how it was applied in 2005, 2006, and by the commission. And I think it really just is the process of having the Office of Planning and Zoning look at it, also Department of Public Works look at it for other implications. It's, it's a process that we, we need to have an, an understanding of before we can apply the code if it were to be adopted, because it does have other implications under Article 17 for development review.
So if, if the process to classify historic and scenic roads is, is sort of, hasn't been utilized in nearly two decades, it seems like maybe it's time to reevaluate how the county establishes or, or designates scenic and historic roads. I know there's, there are land use bodies that do meet in the county, like the PAB or, or something else. Maybe it's time to take a look at how we do this versus just securing four votes to keep a developer from having to mitigate failed roads. That's, that's my biggest concern. I know in my own community, it didn't, didn't have to do with scenic and historic, but we have a major intersection that through new development slipped by, and the developer didn't have to do the mitigation, and now we're doing it. The county is doing it. Two, two, you know, two, two and a half million dollar project. Again, not scenic and historic, but it, it concerns me to circumvent, circumvent a process while also allowing not only the two projects that haven't mitigated, but maybe the, the five, to say, I'm going to retest now that that's a scenic and historic road, and we're stuck with mitigating flooding and, and other things that are already planned. I don't, I'm just trying to wrap my head around all the ways that we've done this in the past and how we could be more strategic and thoughtful in the future.
Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District 7. I have a couple of thoughts that are swirling around, so I'm just going to kind of get them all out, and maybe there's more than one question in here, so we can take it as, as we can. I guess a couple of things. Ms. Cox, I heard you say rural road, but to my understanding, there is, there's a designation for scenic and historic, and then there's an additional designation for rural. And so this is designating as scenic and historic, not necessarily rural, unless I have that wrong. And so then, I guess the following question for that is, how long do you think it would take to make an evaluation? Because I'm looking at some of the scenic and historic road requirements, and actually, there are quite a number of restrictions on developments on scenic and historic roads, including that the access shall not be from the scenic and historic road. So I'm trying to wrap my head around mitigation for the road, but also it actually might help with some traffic concerns on the road if developments that went in that area were not allowed to access from that road. I'm just going to throw all that out there, and, and go for it.
So indeed, under our, under the two maps that were adopted, there are two maps. One is a scenic and historic rural road map that has zoning implications only under Article 18. There are restrictions on use. And that's a smaller subset list of a larger list of scenic and historic roads that, I think it's 152, 154. Now, the evaluation criteria created by the 1997 Commission, they actually identified two different road types. One is rural in a, if you can, if you will, a lowercase rural by seven, and there are seven criteria under that to be designated as a scenic rural road. And that's not for the map implications, but just the criteria that's in the 1997 Commission report that staff and the commission used to, to come up with what their list of roads might be. There is also another type of road called a neighborhood road, and there are five criteria there. Those are meant for communities that, like 1920s beach resorts, if you will, like little tiny roads that are tiny roads that are neighborhood in nature. Odenton, for example, has several scenic and historic roads that are neighborhood in nature. There's a different set of criteria for those. So in this instance, we are, we are able to evaluate it. It would probably take a couple of weeks to be able to do the historic research. There's an element of historic significance. Is there an association? We'd need to do plat research, cartographic look. But what we would be doing is, for, because we, we don't, we haven't looked at the road yet, we'll be looking at it under both criteria to see which criteria it meets and, and if it, if it would, you know, hit the threshold. Now, the, the evaluation process is, I've been able to reconstruct it from back in the 97 report. The, the consultant that worked on this for three years, she studied all of the roads in the county for three years and did a really in-depth dive. And her, her tendency tended to be, if there were three criteria of the rural roads, she would give it the highest designation of protection. If there were, or, I'm sorry, the, the lowest of just recognizing it, but not really saying there was much to save there, except remembering that the road was there. As you go up and it, it's eligible under more criteria, it becomes a more significant road and more, you know, limitations, and a, a more stringent review is, is appropriate. So in this case, there, there are, the words are thrown around in a kind of in, in precise manner, but we would be evaluating these roads in our second, you know, this, this quick review process that we're being, being, looking, looking at doing, under both a rural road criteria set by 1997 Commission and the neighborhood version of it with five criteria.
Okay.
Does that help?
That helps tremendously. No, I really appreciate it. So it's rural with a capital, there's a rural with a capital R and a rural with a lowercase r underneath. Okay. May I ask a follow-up, Madam Chair?
And, and could I also, when you're, when you're done, I have a follow-up to your first question about where the projects take access from, and that's a really important thing.
Okay, awesome. A couple of weeks. I believe this bill is not up for a vote until the first week in October. Does that mean you might be able to get us all an evaluation?
I believe that our staff can do that.
Okay, thank you so much.
Okay, so you had asked, where do the projects take access from? In, in terms of the map that we're working with now, none of the seven projects take direct access in the mapped portion that's to go onto the scenic and historic map.
Okay.
If they were, they would all have another set of, of development criteria that they would have to meet that, based on, on the nature of the projects they're proposing, they would really not want to do that. So we're dealing with a portion of Ridge Road where none of these seven development applications are taking direct access from.
Okay.
What we don't know is where the three to five more are going to or not.
Okay.
We, there's projects coming that we don't know much about yet.
But they would not, if it were designated as scenic and historic, they would not be able to access from that portion of the road?
Well, they could, but they'd have to change the development application significantly.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much. Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District Five. So I'm looking on GIS, and I see the, the windiness of Ridge Road that Ms. Lacy mentioned. It doesn't look like there are any blind curves, or are, are there? I have not been up in, in this area, so.
Madam Chair?
May I ask a follow-up question?
Go ahead.
There's a reason I'm asking this question. I'm going to ask one more. Long range in transportation. We all know the areas in our own districts that have future plans for improvements. Are Ridge Road or Furnace Branch kind of teed up in the future? I know Mr. Sneed's in the room. He's not here for this bill, but if he has any information, either, or, or Ms. Lacy.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Thank you. So, we have multiple roads in the county that start with Furnace. So this is one sticking point in our discussion. To be very clear, this is Furnace Avenue, and it actually goes from the easternmost part of Elkridge, near the Elkridge Furnace Inn, across to River Road. So it's a pretty short segment, but it's Furnace Avenue. And then, the part of Ridge Road that is contemplated to be protected as scenic and historic in this bill is the northernmost part of Ridge Road, which goes from that intersection with Furnace Avenue, south to where it crosses with 295. But that whole area is within a, you know, triangle of highways. And the Patapsco River Valley is a very historic part of our, you know, local, well, history, so to speak. I mean, it used to be that ocean-going ships from Britain would, you know, come all the way up to Elkridge through that river before it was more filled in. So you'll see the steep slopes and the curves that, that are there. And now, we have Patapsco Valley State Park, which Furnace Avenue actually goes through the state park, the main access to, or one of the main access to this area of the state park, because there are several going all the way west, pretty far. It goes through, as in, on both sides, it is Patapsco Valley State Park. And this part of Ridge Avenue that, Ridge Road, excuse me, is on its eastern side bordered by Patapsco Valley State Park, and on its western side has, I think it's about eight parcels. One of them, I think, has been recently subdivided into additional single-family homes, but it is very much a local traffic-only kind of area compared to the surrounding highways and highway access. It's not like five minutes to get on the highway. It's more like 10 or, or more.
Okay. Madam Chair, may I just?
Mm-hmm.
I appreciate that information, and I am glad I have a full gas tank, because I'll probably be heading up that way after our meeting. But my reason for asking these questions is that there is a historic road in District Five that has had issues with sightlines and curves, and it has been a challenge to figure out how to mitigate that. There was an idea to cut a straightaway around one of the corners, but we were not allowed to do that because of the historic designation. You cannot move the center line of the roadway. So I ask that, I ask these questions to understand if in the future, the county, excuse me, was planning on making any road improvements for sightlines or anything of that nature, understanding what this designation would do in that event.
If I might? Again, Steve Kaisigler, Planning and Zoning. I think the key thing you're asking, what's the future plans for Ridge Road for the county? And, and you're absolutely right. There's a lot of development coming that's going to be accessing, using, going up and down Ridge Road. Most of it seems to be warehouse, but there may be a significant amount that may be residential. So we're not just talking truck traffic, we're talking a lot more vehicles, per se. So, county recognizing that, we've been interacting probably for the last three to five months with the administration, Public Works, Office of Transportation, OPZ, we think we need to request a pretty large CIP project for Ridge Road in our next operating capital budget. There's, we're working with the developers so that they can meet their mitigation requirements, but the broader issue, I think, has to be, we need a pretty big CIP project. There's, there's going to be just too much development on that road not to make adjustments to it.
Ms. Lacy?
Thank you. Unless any other council members want to ask a question first, but I wanted to respond to some of the various points.
I see, only your lights, so.
Okay.
Looks like you can proceed.
Okay. So I think some things definitely need clarification. First, the potential for a Ridge Road CIP that may or may not happen is not likely to, as far as I've been told, wouldn't be covering the portion of Ridge Road that I'm trying to protect in this bill. It would be from 295 south, approximately. Ridge Road goes all the way down to the central part of Hanover and Arundel Mills Mall, and then it goes down through Severn, down to 175 at Fort Meade, and then turns into Rockenbach Road and goes all the way in there. So this, when we say Ridge Road, we need to be very specific in defining the part that we're talking about. And this is the northernmost end that leads into a T. With Furnace Avenue, you go left to go into Howard County. There's a tiny section that is still in Anarundel County, and when you go, you're put into a historic part of Elkridge that is like a little, you know, neighborhood street grid, and then eventually you can get to Route One, and then eventually you can get to the highway. And if you turn right, you end up going under this rail overpass, and then you have the road Ts again. That's the part that would be protected. And then there are two roads that you could go, you know, left or right. They kind of make a big circle around and puts you up near some of the corporate buildings and hotels up there in that part of Lenthicum Heights, I think, by then. So, there's, there's nothing, to my knowledge, in any existing CIP, in any potentially discussed CIP, in any state transportation planning, any other county transportation planning, that indicates that improvements need to be made in this specific area. They will be very difficult, they'll be very expensive, and they won't serve all that many people, when instead, the investments that make sense to make are on Ridge Road going south from 295, because that's where you head toward the mall, you head toward the population centers, you head toward the Fort 100, your other highways and infrastructure. I have more points, but I'll pause, because perhaps somebody would like to say something.
It looked like Mr. Stephen Kaisigler had.
I, I understand everything you said, and again, Steve Kaisigler, Planning and Zoning Officer. We are having discussions with DPW about, we don't have a CIP project now, so it has to be studied and put together, but I think we're, we're looking at going further now, further, further north than you might think. We do acknowledge that Furnace Road runs through, Furnace Avenue, excuse me, runs through the state park, as does parts of the northern part of Ridge Road. But the implications of all of this development, I think, are going to force us to look broader in solutions to dealing with all of that traffic. So, I, I understand what you're saying, but I think we're looking further north than you think we should. On Ridge Road. That's all right.
Madam Chair? Thank you. You.
You know, I think, I think it's great that plans are happening, but none of those have been, no documentation has been provided to me to evaluate this bill. And the idea of this bill has been discussed with different folks at OPZ since at least April. I was going to bring the bill in July, so there's, there's no, I haven't caused a time compression for this issue to be evaluated. But I do want to return to the subject of the criteria that are in our code for designating scenic and historic rural roads and scenic and historic neighborhood roads. So there are seven criteria in the first part for rural roads, and according to, my analysis is admittedly not an expert, but as a knowledgeable person, I do think that both roads meet five out of the seven criteria. I don't believe they meet criteria number two or seven. And I'm saying this because I'm sure you will do an evaluation, and I want everyone to know, I'll, I'll pass this around to all my colleagues, if you want to take a look at it, but for, as far as the criteria for scenic and historic neighborhood roads, I believe both roads meet four out of the five criteria. The only one they don't, the only criteria on they don't meet is number four. I also have more information on the history of the area and the maps that I can supply to everyone, but I. I do want to emphasize that this bill is not in any way intended, nor do I think the unintended consequences would be, to have developers avoid mitigation in an area, because the point is that this area shouldn't be used at all. We shouldn't be approving, approving development that needs to come in and destroy this area that meets these criteria. And I don't have any relationships with any developers, and I haven't taken any developer money, and I'm not trying to mitigate anybody's problem so that they don't have to mitigate. I just want to protect the area that meets these criteria, and we have no way to do it. In fact, we should have had a scenic and historic roads commission of some sort convened well before the beginning of this term, knowing that Plan 2040 was coming up, so that we could have evaluated those things, because our code says we were supposed to. But that's literally the cars under the rail bridge. And, you know, here is a simple solution that can have immediate effect to protect an area. And if in the future, it becomes apparent that some part of it was a bad idea, a future council can remove the designation, and we move on with what we need to do in this county. So, that's my statement. I'm happy to answer anybody's questions. Thank you.
If I may, Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Barron.
I think, I stated in, in my opening remarks, we share the goal of protecting the communities along Ridge Road. I think the discussion that we all need to dive deeper in over the next few weeks is, what are the consequences of this bill, and will it achieve the stated goal?
Mr. Kaisigler, I see your light's still on.
No, I'm just, I'm just agreeing.
Okay. All right. Then seeing no additional lights from my colleagues, I will say thank you for this discussion. It's been very helpful. And I, too, will be taking a drive at some point in the future on Ridge Road and make sure to include this northern section that connects to Furnace Avenue. At this time, we will move on to Bill Number 84-22, and Mr. Volkey, this is your bill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This bill, as I think everybody recalls from the last meeting, was a replacement to another bill that was in front of the council that was withdrawn. Again, it's going to the same concept or the same idea that the other bill had, which is, let's try to set some objective standards, if we can, for the flags that we fly in the county on county property, and what that looks like. This is a narrower version of that bill. Basically, it prohibits private entities or private persons from flying flags on county flagpoles. It's pretty simple. I believe that this is entirely in line with the City of Boston v. Shirtlift case. So with that, if anybody has questions, feel free.
Mr. Barron, would you like to respond?
This bill's unnecessary.
All right, Ms. Pickard, you may have the floor.
Thank you, Allison Pickard, District. I was just curious if private persons or entities were shimmying up county flagpoles to switch out flags?
Solution, looking for a problem, Mr. Volkey.
I think we have to ask county police. I don't know how many calls they've gotten for that.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District Five. So, this is much smaller than the original bill, and I had been communicating with Ms. Klasmeier on the, the Boston case and what our policy here in Anarundel County is, how the previous bill related. And it seems as though this really gets at the heart of that Boston case. Is that accurate, Ms. Kenny?
Sure. Kelly Kenny, Supervising County Attorney. Yes, I think that's correct. In the Boston situation, that city allowed third parties to put flags up, and so, once you kind of open that door, you have to allow all flags. You can't discriminate based on content. So this does actually resolve the issue that did occur in Boston by just flat-out saying that no flags can be erected on county flagpoles unless they're specific flags.
May I ask a follow-up? So, in the previous bill, I was trying to go through the county website and identify exactly what our policy is in the county, and it was difficult to find. So what is the current policy of the county regarding the use of flagpoles? How does it, how do we determine which flags are where? Because I know we have the POW flag right outside of this building here. We've seen it different buildings, different flags. Who makes that determination? What is the process? And how can folks find out what the policy is in the county?
Kelly Kenny, Supervising County Attorney. There is an admin pro regarding flags, but that is mainly governing when to raise a flag and put a flag at half-mast and things of that nature. I do not think that there's a specific written policy with regard to third-party flags. It's my understanding from Central Services, and that is the department that really oversees all county buildings, including the flagpoles. They don't typically receive many requests to put up any additional third-party flags on county flagpoles, as far as I know.
As far as the administration is aware, there, we can't find any requests of a private person flying a flag on a county flagpole.
Go ahead.
I guess what I'm trying to, to point out is that if I were a person or an organization who had interest in having a flag flown on county property, I would naturally, I think, go to the county code and see what, what the code says. go to the county code and see what the code says. Would you agree that this gives some very clear standards by putting it in the code?
Kelly Kenny, Supervising, do you want to answer that?
I was just going to say, we're not deluged with a flood of people requesting flags be flown, non, not the United States, State of Maryland, or county flag, other flags. We're not deluged, this is, this is just not an issue, this is a distraction.
Ms. Kenny, did you want to add to that?
No, not unless Ms. Fiedler has a follow-up question.
No. Thank you.
Okay, and Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Jessica Hare, District 7. I just have one follow-up on that. Okay, we haven't had, let's say there's been no requests yet. If a request came in tomorrow, and there was no policy in the code, or in, you know, Central Services' policy, written statement about whether somebody can or can't, and Central Services said no, do we, are we open to liability then, given the Boston case, because we don't have anything written on it?
Kelly Kenny, Supervising County Attorney. No, I don't think that we would really be open to liability or First Amendment claim, because flagpoles are clearly a form of government speech, so the government does have the authority to regulate what is put up on their flagpoles. So I don't think that denying a request would really open us up to any liability or claim.
Despite the Boston case?
In Boston, they had a pattern and practice of allowing third parties, so that, it's kind of like an all-or-nothing situation. So in Boston, they allowed third-party flags to be flown regularly, like almost every day of the year, it sounded like, and then they denied a request for one flag, and that's what opened them up to the liability, because they had, they disallowed that request based on content. And so then that opened up the First Amendment claim.
Okay, so if we just said no as a matter of practice, to everybody?
Right. That would not be... Right.
Okay, okay, thank you. Ms. Lacy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Kenny, could this objective of this bill be accomplished by executive order?
Kelly Kenny, Supervising County Attorney. Yes, it could.
Would that executive order go through a legal review before it went into effect? I mean, they don't come to council review, obviously, but would it go through that review?
Kelly Kenny, Supervising County Attorney. Yes, all executive orders go through legal review, or this could also be addressed by administrative procedure as well, which also undergoes legal review.
Okay. I was just thinking that if in the future we wanted to establish any kind of policy or undo such a policy, in general, I would think that our legal review would include citations and explanations of how this case is not like that case, or it is like this case, and what have you, but that means that this boils down to a policy choice, rather than a legal choice.
Right, this particular bill, this is a policy choice.
Okay, thank you.
I have a sort of follow-up question. This is more just understanding how things are handled currently. So, any of, let's imagine, I think, you know, the Ravens win the Super Bowl, and the decision was made to fly a Ravens flag, or a purple flag, or something like that, on one of the county flagpoles. How would that, who would be the one making that decision to fly sort of any of the non-official flags? Would that be the county executive, or how would that happen? Or maybe another example would be, how is the decision made to fly the POW flag? And I'm not questioning, you know, that, the choice, but just wanting to know the process.
So I think there's an important issue in the Boston case that is, and maybe Ms. Kenny can correct me if I am getting this incorrect. In the Boston case, it was, a third-party group was making a request to fly a flag, right? In your example, I highly doubt the Ravens are going to come to Anarundale County and ask that we fly their flag. It would more likely be county employees deciding, hey, we just won the Super Bowl, we want to fly the flag. And in that case, it would be the county making the decision, and I think I'm correct, Ms. Kenny, in that that would not open us up to the pickle that the Boston case was.
Okay, I think you misunderstood, or, you know, misinterpreted my question. I really was asking how the decision was made, for example, let's go with the POW flag, because it is flying. Who exactly would make that decision? Is that...
So, in that case, when County Executive Pittman took office, that flag was flying, so either by action or inaction, we made the decision to keep that flag flying. So, at the end of the day, it's the county executive who makes the final call.
Okay, and is it safe to assume that no other county entity could make that decision?
No, I mean, if there's a flagpole in front of a police department...
Okay.
Like, would they have to call the county exec to fly a flag?
Yeah, I'm just asking if there's any protocol, if this is sort of like, you know, is, what process, if any, is there for something like this?
Common sense.
Okay, so...
We haven't had any issue here.
Okay, that's what I'm, you know, I'm really trying to get the current process, not anything more, there's no hidden agenda in my question. Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you. I appreciate your line of questions, because I literally asked the same exact ones to the process of the previous bill, because it's not very easy to determine who says yes, who says no, if there is a request, where it goes. But my question is, without the passage of this bill, could in the future, an administration determine that they would like to open up a flagpole on all county properties to the public for use? And then would we have to open it up literally to all, in order to keep ourselves from getting into the Boston situation?
So in your example, just making sure I get it correct, a future decision is made that private entities can fly a flag on a county pole, and would that open us up to having to not regulate what is flown by content under the Boston decision?
Correct. Correct.
I'm pretty sure the answer is yes, but I'm looking at the better attorney down at the end of the table.
Appreciate that.
Kelly Kenny, Supervising County Attorney. I lost track of the question after Mr. Baron restated it, but I think, yes, I think the answer is yes, that a future administration could open the door to allow the flagpoles to be used by third parties, and then you could run into the Boston situation.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Pickard.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Allison Pickard, D2. So, this one sentence added to the code somehow creates, it doesn't actually create a policy about which flags are flown on county property. Right now, each department, or where there's a flagpole, decides if they're going to fly the Ravens flag, if we ever win the Super Bowl again. I don't, I don't understand the bill, but at some point, if the county, if a county executive wanted to start a program where we, I mean, wouldn't they look to the Supreme Court case and say, hey, we're not going to do that, Boston already got in trouble for that? I mean, it's...
This administration would.
It's just weird, this feels weird.
I just have a follow-up comment, because this reminds me of a situation that actually may have been a Supreme Court case in my home. I grew up in the suburbs of St. Louis, and actually, like a lot of places, we have an Adopt a Highway program. And there was an, you know, the local businesses or entities can adopt, you know, and they have the, this section of the highway adopted by. And one of the, a chapter of the Ku Klux Klan, not in the immediate jurisdiction, actually asked to adopt a section of highway, and the local government said no. And then it was fought in court, and at least for some period of time, possibly before they ended the Adopt a Highway section, there was a section of highway with a, this section of the highway adopted by the so-and-so chapter of the Ku Klux Klan. So, I, not, you know, I think, like you said, we don't necessarily have a policy of it, but I don't necessarily think it's totally, you know, not worth looking at. So I'm not sure where I met this bill, but I thought I'd raise that example, because I think, I haven't read the Boston decision, but I would be almost surprised if it didn't mention, if that was a Supreme Court case, that Adopt a Highway program wasn't mentioned in that case.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Thank you. I think, it sounds like we maybe could benefit from having a legal memo that goes over government speech, the government speech doctrine, the difference between the actual, you know, free speech part and the Establishment Clause to distinguish the Shirtlift case, because that clearly doesn't cover everything, and the Adopt a Road program is important too. But maybe, maybe something like that could help guide, if not this council, future councils in figuring out, you know, what the council would agree is good policy on both the content or the availability of times for people to be able to speak through a government flagpole or not, and also serve the purpose of protecting us from potential future liability, because those things could all be incorporated either into an executive order or into the code. Thank you.
We can put that together for you. I just wanted to clarify, I did a quick Google search, apparently that case was in Georgia, but its implication was in my hometown in Missouri as well. Seeing no additional lights, let's move on to, let's take a moment to just discuss our resolutions, because the next three resolutions, 34-22, 35-22, and 36-22, all are dealing with appointments and/or reappointments. Oh...
I didn't, we skipped a bill.
Oh, I was intending to go back at that, at the very end. But we, let's do this, is there any need to discuss any of these appointment or reappointment resolutions? Okay, and would you guys prefer to go back to, I think it was 80-22? And that's Mr. Volkey, that's your bill, we skipped it since you weren't, or you were the, one of the sponsors. So actually, let's do that, and then we'll take a look at those last resolutions, and see if there's anything we need to discuss. All right, Mr. Volkey, you have the floor for Bill 80-22.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So Bill 80-22, I appreciate the cosponsorship of Councilwoman Fiedler and Councilwoman Pickard, and I think Ms. Matthews has hopefully had a chance to look at this. I spoke with Ms. Lays the other day, I think the department has reviewed this. Basically, the intention with this bill is to give greater enforcement authority to rangers in our county parks, giving them a broader array of offenses that basically they have the authority to cite. It even includes one that I know, we heard, there was a gentleman here, I don't know, a couple months ago, talking to us about the moored boat that was in the channel, and what was going on, and people coming on and off of his property and all of that. And so this actually does expand out to give some enforcement authority for the county there as well. So that's the idea with this. I will tell you, the impetus for me came out of dirt bikes on county-owned property, and the idea that if they're using county property, we want to have the park rangers be able to do something about it in addition to the police, and not always having to sit there and wait for the police to show up, which seems onerous, and frankly, like a waste of county resources. But then as we looked at it, it seemed to expand into, there are some additional things that park rangers should have the authority to cite if they see. So with that, that's the purpose of the bill, and I would ask my colleagues to move it favorably.
Can't do that today.
Soon, quickly.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear what you said.
I just made a little joke, I apologize.
Okay, sorry, Mr. Baron, you have the floor anyway. I'm kind of curious what the joke was, but I couldn't hear it, so.
Mr. Volkey asked to move the bill, we can't move the bill today at the work session. So I have Ms. Matthews and Ms. Woodfield with me, and Kelly Kenny sticking around. Appreciate the sponsor working with the administration on this bill. Like, like some of the previous bills, it's an important tool to help keep our parks clean and safe, so everybody can enjoy them, and we would be happy to have this tool in our toolbox, as I say.
Any additional questions?
So we will support moving it at the appropriate time.
All right.
Can I just thank Ms. Woodfield and Ms. Matthews for being here and sitting around and waiting? I'm sorry I was late, so thank you.
Absolutely, absolutely. And it's like, nice to see, I mean, of course, you're wonderful in your ranger uniform, but it's unusual to see you in informal business attire. And, okay, and now I did, I'm sorry, I have to mention this one last time, apparently there was also a Supreme Court case out of suburban St. Louis regarding the Ku Klux Klan that has been going on since the mid-'90s, which is why it's stuck in my head. All right, so, let's go on. So we've decided there's no need to look at any of those appointment or reappointment resolutions, but we do have others that are slightly more substantive. Resolution Number 37-22, which is a resolution approving Anarundale County's 2022 Financial Assurance Plan for Compliance with the National Pollut and Discharge Elimination, Phase One Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System Permit. Is there any discussion that my colleagues would like to have on this? Or, Mr., this is actually an administration, so if you'd like to take a moment and give us your commentary?
Sure. It's a mouthful of a bill. It's a very important, or it's a resolution, excuse me. It's a very important resolution. State law requires that the county submit the plan to the Maryland Department of the Environment every two years to demonstrate the county has the financial means to achieve the requirements under our permit. And this is the purpose for the resolution before you. Our experts at the table, if you have any technical questions, but, so you know, the bottom line, the projected costs through FY '27 are $477 million, and $486 million in revenue is expected, which demonstrates the county's strong fiscal management to meet our requirements under state law.
Seeing no questions from my colleagues, I will thank the panel members for sticking it out here. And say thank you for the good financial plan that it appears you have created, $9 million. Well, what's that?
I'll take it back there.
Okay, yes. And of course, someone will be wanting that extra $9 million for something, I'm sure. All right, let's move on to 38-22, Resolution 38-22, Resolution authorizing the filing of an application with the Maryland Transit Administration of the Maryland Department of Transportation for an Anarundale Transportation Plan Grant and Other Funds under the Federal Transit Act for Federal Fiscal Year 2023. This is another administration resolution. Mr. Baron, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have our Director, Sam Snead, with me, and Ms. McGill-Belik from Transportation, and Ms. Kelly Kenny is sticking with me. 38, Resolution 38-22 endorses the county's application to the MTA for an annual transportation plan grant. We anticipate receiving grants totaling over $2.5 million through MTA as a result of this endorsement. There is future local match requirements of about $346,000, but investing $346 to get $2.5 million seems like a pretty good deal to help get people where they need to be. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Snead, if he has any comments, and we'll ask for your support of this resolution at the appropriate time.
So this is just an annual process that we didn't participate in previously, because Howard County RTA was our overarching lots? But now that we're our own lots, we'll have to come each year to do this before the council. And it allows us to not only get the funds that he mentioned for operating, which saves us a lot of money as a county in terms of contributing operating dollars, but also allows us to accept discretionary funds from the federal government through different grant programs that have become available under EJIA as well.
So that, just to clarify, I think your statement just answered this, but the $2.5 million that would come from this grant is not, you know, designated for any particular project, just general in the transportation operating budget?
Yes, similar to, you know, CARES funding, there's lots funding, and then there's formula funding for different programs. And we also have discretionary funding, which is, you know, capital and targeted, like a recent grant we just won, but this particular pot of funds is for operating primarily.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no additional red lights, I'll thank the panel for being here and waiting for this presentation. And we will move on to our last resolution of the day, Resolution Number 39-22, and this is one we've seen before, a resolution approving the application to the United States Department of Justice, Office of Justice Programs for a grant on... of Justice Office of Justice Programs for a grant under Edward Byrne Assistance Grant Program, federal FY 2022, local solicitation and recognizing the county executive's authority to act in connection with the grant. And once again, administration, this is yours.
Thanks, Madam Chair, and Mr. Teru, and from Budget, and Mr. Tyler from Law, stuck it all the way to the last one, and it's his only resolution today. So as you mentioned, this is one we do every year. It is a federal grant program. This resolution has a requirement that it be out for 30 days, correct? So I think the hearing is not the next meeting, but the following meeting, if my math is right. The grants for this year total $145,000 and change. There is no county match component, so please, when the time comes, pass this.
Thank you. Seeing no red lights, I think we know the drill on this one. Thank you for sticking it out. All right. Thank you to everyone for being here today. Just a quick reminder that our meeting on October 3rd, which is not our next meeting, but two meetings out, will start at 6:00 PM, because we are meeting as the Board of Health on that day, and we're anticipating a slightly longer agenda. But we will meet at our regular time, 7:00 PM, on Monday, September 19th. And seeing no other business from my colleagues, except I see folks putting reminders to themselves to make sure you're here by 6:00 and not 7:00 on the 3rd, we will adjourn this work session. Thank you very much. (applause)